All right, welcome back. This is the 2024 Toki Town Council Forum Part Two. Same as last time, I'm going to direct questions in an alternating fashion. We're going to try to limit the answers to three minutes, and we'll leave time at the end for audience questions. If I could ask everyone in back to just bring it down a little bit, that'd be great. And so we're going to start with the first question, I believe it's Peter. Please provide us with a brief introduction and describe the experience, skills, and abilities that you possess that will enable you to be an effective town council member.
I'm a career management consultant. I've worked with financial institutions, investment banks, asset managers, derivative trading shops all over the world. I think the skills I bring to this are skills I developed during my, what, 25 years, 30 years of consulting experience. Gather a set of facts, examine them, analyze them, come up with a recommendation that anticipates outcomes that are both foreseen and predictable, intended or unintended. That's about it. I mean, I've run teams, I've worked with difficult clients. Bankers can be very difficult people. I think I've been exposed to dozens of different organizations and have made a success of that. So, great. Same question?
So, I'm a banker, Peter.
That was my first jab.
I was too at one point, but it's all right.
So, Kevin, again, thanks for the opportunity. Everybody who's here today and looking in, thanks for the opportunity to learn a little bit more about me. I like Brad. It was a little bit disappointing in the timing, but less so because University of Virginia lost two nights ago, so I'm not so interested in the basketball tournament as I might have been. My experience and background, I grew up in southeast part of Virginia. I went to the University of Virginia, as I just mentioned, got a degree in chemical engineering. I ran chemical plants for about a dozen years, and as my wife likes to say, I had a midlife crisis and decided to go into banking and get out of engineering. So I went to work for JP Morgan on Wall Street as a bond trader at the ripe old age of 35, and spent the last 30 years in the banking industry, either as analyst, a trader, a portfolio manager, and then most recently running global strategy for a group on the West Coast called the Capital Group. The skills that I developed through my career have really kind of fallen into two categories. One is solving problems and building and living with the solutions as an engineer, and the other one is thinking about the financial implications of an investment in particular, multiple investments, what are the different optionality that you have, what's the investment horizon that you're going to have to hold on to this investment, or how long is it going to take to work it through? And those two things, I think, have complemented my ability to be on the planning commission here for the past year, and hopefully on the town council, is making those decisions, how to solve problems, how to fix things, coming up with solutions, but be able to analyze two or three different options and coming out with the best option.
Great. This one comes right back to you, since we're rotating. What do you believe are the key priorities for the town council over the next few years?
Yeah, I think it's three. From the feedback I've had, from my experience, again, on planning commission, one is preserve Kiowa. Two is to think about what are the near-term development issues we're going to face, and then three is the resiliency of the island. So preserve Kiowa really means we need to solve the issues around Captain Sam Spitt now. You asked a question earlier, somebody asked a question, is everybody aligned? I think so. I think if you ask everybody on this island, the alignment would be Captain Sam Spitt needs not to be built on and needs to be preserved, and it's how do we get there? But it's after that, it's the Beach Walker Park, it's parcel A, how's that committee developed? And then the second place, the near-term focus that you have on growth, is what's going to happen with Andel West, what's going to happen with the Kiowa Island Golf Resort? That's more development coming, more stress on our infrastructure, more traffic and issues like that. Those need to be dealt with a lot more vigorously than we've dealt with with the partners in the past, and it's different people, so maybe we have a little bit more trust in them, maybe we just have learned our lesson and we're very vigorous in developing those, the next phase. And in resiliency, we all know about issues around flooding. My real passion is around the preservation and strengthening the infrastructure of that causeway and the bridge coming in. I'm told all the time, we've got an insurance policy, if a storm takes it out, great. Just having an insurance policy is probably not enough for me. So those are my three priorities.
I think it's pulling all the parties on the island together and working together against a variety of issues. Luke's sort of enumerated those. I think we are all going to act in our own interests. The partners are going to act in their interests, the resort is going to act in their interests. We need to come together and have a firm understanding of what each other's interests are, so we can work together and come up with solutions that strengthen the whole. If you look at my website, I agree, for my top priorities, and the overarching priorities for me are the dunes, the marshes, the habitat, and the ecology. Full stop. That's where it starts. And then from there, it's doing a good job. I think the council needs to do a really good job in terms of its day-to-day work. I would like to get us, see us get past the point in time where we're negotiating, reviewing documents that are flawed. I, as a council member, am going to read every document front to back, and I think that's beholden on me in that role, and I think it's beholden on other council members to do that legwork as well. We're not substituting for staff, but there is an oversight function there that needs to be fulfilled. And then finally, collaboration. For me, collaboration means less talking and more listening. Innovative ideas or diverse ideas are welcome, they're expected, and civility and respect at all times. So I think that's, we need to show that to each other as members of the council, we need to show that to the other folks that are in this boat with us on this island, the other entities.
Great. So we'll jump to the next one. I think you take this one first as we go back and forth. Why does the town need a tree ordinance, and does this overlap with the ARB requirements?
I think the town very much needs a tree ordinance. We have a beautiful corridor coming onto the island, and there are gray trees there, there are specimen trees there. They have to be preserved. They are a fundamental part of the look and feel of South Carolina and Charleston in particular, and on the island itself. We have to, they have to be preserved. They are, from my standpoint, they're part of the habitat. They're important to the ecosystem, and we can't go about willy-nilly removing these magnificent trees without an awfully good reason.
Luke?
Yeah, it's unfortunate that a lot of times ordinances come from mistakes and things you've learned and already happened, and I think a lot of us on the island remember the clearcutting of the Cape, the effectively clearcutting of what is going to be ocean pines, and I guess I would say the lack of the ARB, who's responsible for trees on the island, in managing that situation and preventing it. So I think that's where it comes from, at least in my experience and understanding. The ARB doesn't have enforcement powers after it's done, where the town can do this from an ordinance standpoint. So is it a reaction to the developer? Absolutely. Does it need to be extended to single-family homes? We're having a vigorous debate about that now. I would say that personally, right now, in my mind, for single-family homes, the tree ordinance, it doesn't need to be passed today, and for new construction for single-family residences, the ARB does a great job in protecting trees. But from future development, right now, I think it's important because of what we experienced with the developer, so that it doesn't happen again. If it happened again and we didn't have a tree ordinance, we'd look pretty silly. So that's the real driving force.
Could I just follow up?
On the single-family home issue, I strongly advocate that it apply to single-family homes. We need to start now, we need to start at the ground, it needs to be complete coverage of all building instruction that's going to go on the island, starting now.
There's a difference, a little bit of one. And do you want to follow up on that, just to keep it?
I think that's fair.
Great. All right, so then the next question comes to you. What are your thoughts on Toki's involvement in additional amenities for Kiowa, such as additional fitness facilities or a performing arts center?
Yeah, this is an interesting question, because again, when you think about the island of Kiowa and the town's responsibility, the town can't really own any property inside the first gate. Full stop. There's a whole host of issues that gets created, so any facilities would be, have to be outside the first gate. There's been a research study done, a consultant was hired to look at the amenities specifically for Performing Arts Center. I think to this point, they've decided that the size that the consultant suggested would not be economically sustainable. I think where I stand now today is, I think that's a great idea, but if, only when it becomes economically viable. There are other options. There are certainly several different venues on island, just off island, and slightly up Betsy Karason that can be used. I've been to several, or quite a few, arts council events, and the one thing that doesn't happen because of capacity is, if a venue is sold out, they don't ever have a second night of that performance. So maybe we don't need a venue that's big enough for 2,000 people, maybe we just need to have a second or a third performance of it. So I think depending on the economic viability, until that's proven, I'm not sure that we'd want to venture that far, and I'm not sure that the community wants to have something where we're required to draw people in from other venues, from other neighborhoods, in from the city of Charleston, to make sure that it is economically viable. That's what I understand is today, but I'm certainly willing to listen and learn more from the community.
Peter?
I'm glad this came up, because I didn't expect this question to be raised. I am a huge advocate of the Performing Arts Center. I think Luke is correct, there are citing questions, there are economic viability questions, but the, we need more space if we're going to fulfill the demand for certain sorts of performances on the island. We also have to think about traffic. It's yet another magnet for trips in, that has to be considered. That's really, from my standpoint, a citing thing. But what I've seen in doing these, my direct experience with the creation of a performing arts center, is it has huge beneficial effects before it's built. It binds the community together. It's a piece of audacious philanthropy usually, where you have disparate parties, you could have partners, you could have resorts, all getting together, people getting together to make this happen. It's not just about giving money and having named spaces. It brings people together to create something that's permanent for the island and that's very valuable. And then after it's built, it's a place where people can gather and enjoy each other's company, it'll have meeting spaces in it which are sorely needed. I am a, just, I can't say, I can't overstate my advocacy for a, the Performing Arts and Culture Center on Kiowa, someplace properly cited.
Okay, thank you. Next question, so this comes back to Peter. Can you share your views on the comprehensive plan? How will this plan benefit, I say here, all Kika members, but everyone on the island?
It's under formation as we speak. They're necessary. I think it, there's a process going on now, I'm not going to opine on it. I have very particular, I have specific views on certain aspects of town limits, for example, the question of annexation. I think I'm more with Brad on where the geographic boundaries of the town should end. I think we should focus on, if we're going to annex land, we should next land with the idea of buffering and preservation of habitat and ecosystems. How we, I don't think annexation will be a viable tool for controlling development around the island. I think that will require us, as the council already has in place, forming very strong and influential relationships with the other players in Charleston County and on Johns Island.
Great. Luke?
So, as many of you know, I'm on the planning commission. We are right in the midst of doing the comprehensive plan. We've been working on it almost a year. We probably have four to six months to go. It is the guiding document for the town council for Kiowa over the next 10 years. It's really the strategic plan of the island, and it has 10 elements. We're actually going to have 11 elements, because we're going to add one, because of Kiowa's uniqueness, we're going to add a municipal element to it, but it addresses everything from infrastructure to transportation to resiliency, zoning codes, includes stormwater management issues. All of these things are in the comprehensive plan, and it's supposed to be a time when we step back and forget about kind of the day-to-day things that we're battling every day, and say, where do we want to be five years down the road, or 10, or even 15 years? And put together a strategic plan to do that. This is probably my favorite thing I'm working on on planning commission, because through my life and through my career, I've done a lot of strategic plans for businesses, and so the ability to step back and forget about what's going on today, this week, this month, and think about where do we want to be, what's the vision for the island? We've had a lot of community input, several different times, we've had consultant input, and then we need to tailor it specifically for the island, because this is unique. Again, this is, we've got a first gate, and the town doesn't go past the first gate, but a lot of the strategic issues that we have to think about are inside the island. So again, it raises the issue of the partnership with Kika, it has implications for the conservancy, but it's a very fun tool to work on to set the vision for the island for the next 10 years.
Can I just make one remark? I have total respect for what the planning commission is doing, and that's one of the reasons for my rather weak answer on whether, what impact it is. As a council member and as a person who's involved in various governance activities, I have, my mind is to respect the recommendations and the work of committees and commissions that report up to some other body. It is both silly to delegate this process work, this legwork, this year-long effort on this very good thing. It's silly to sort of second-guess that. It's also very disempowering, either midway through or after the fact, to second-guess their judgments. I think unless something's completely off the rails, our style should be to accept the recommendations of the committees and the commissions that are doing the hard work here, and that applies to all the commissions that are under the town's purview.
Did you want to follow up on that or jump to the next one?
That's very good. No, thank you.
Next question, yours.
Thank you for your work.
What are your ideas for dealing with traffic issues at the main gate and the whole Beach Walker Drive corridor?
Yeah, the traffic issue is one of those complicated issues because of the different entities involved in the responsibilities. You can think of the issue being, well, it's because of the gate, the first gate, full stop. You could say it's because of the construction and the contractors and all those people coming in, full stop. You could say the intersection is poorly designed, and there needs to be an additional turn lane, or maybe a circle or a stoplight, full stop. I would say to you that it's probably all of those and maybe a couple more things. And this is one where that collaboration that our two mayoral candidates talked about with the town and with Kika is going to be critically important. How do we solve that? It's probably going to involve the resort and maybe the partners as well, because there's probably land swaps or land use involved, land taking. I think that there's been some strides have been made. The town put a, I guess I'd call them a traffic cop out there at certain times of day. I personally have experienced that and think it's very effective. So in the short run, I think there's a lot of small solutions that we can do, like this traffic cop, to enhance the traffic flow at critical times during the day, early in the morning, lunchtime, and at the end of the day. But I think there needs to be a long-term solution applied to this, and this is one where I think that we missed a boat in the original ARDA, that we didn't require some mitigation, at least it wasn't enough based on traffic studies, to come from the partners, because only traffic's going to increase down Beach Walker with the Cape opening. So I think as we think about the resort and the ARD with the resort, that's first and foremost on my mind, to make sure that traffic mitigation or traffic issues are involved, but it's going to involve some short-term solutions before we get to a long-term solution, and the long-term solution is absolutely going to involve the town and Kiowa. And everybody's going to have a different view, with maybe one exception, I'm pretty sure nobody wants a stoplight there.
Peter?
Thank you. I agree with Luke. I think it's a systems solution that's required in terms of looking at the entire picture. I think there's, there has to be collaboration, which is a version of a system solution at the political level. I think there's only so much that will result from rejiggering, restriping, rerouting traffic, particularly in the Beach Walker area. I think in the end, we will need to either cap, hopefully reduce the number of trips. We regulate permits, we give, say, let's take an annual permit, and you can come on and off and through gates and all around an unlimited amount of time. That's a free resource. It's paid for dearly in dollars, but at, once those dollars are paid, that vehicle can move around at will, and those are trips, and that's what's causing congestion generally. As it relates to Beach Walker, we have a public beach park there. People are coming down this long, narrow corridor, they see the sign, the parking lot is full, they're not going to turn around and go an hour back home. They hang, and then they wait, and they get in, and that's a source of congestion as well. We have to come up with, I think that, at the end of the day, we need to come up with incentives for various parties that will incent them to, one, say, let's take contractors, major construction projects, incent them to be more efficient in terms of how they get their subs on and off the island, and how frequently they get those subs on and off the island. I think they're tried and true economic means for creating those incentives, we need to do that. There are other tools for other areas of the island. Beach Walker, for example, we could conceivably, it's not a simple solution, but we could conceivably come up with a reservation system combined with a lottery, national park system approach. It's elaborate, it may not be feasible, but it's something we should at least look at to prevent these people from coming all the way down there and sitting and waiting to get on the beach. And so I think there are a variety of solutions, a variety of different natures of the solutions, but in the end, we need to reduce the number of trips.
Great. So I have two more questions, and then we'll go to the audience, but just to keep everyone in flow. So I think this comes back to Peter, and this one's close to my heart. Have you studied the Phase Two Report created by the Joint ARB Task Force, and what are your thoughts on its recommendations?
I have. I was a harsh critic, if you can probably find my remarks online, of the Phase One Report. I think the Phase Two Report is, pushes the solution way forward, and I think from my standpoint, it makes sense. And in keeping with my previous remarks, that was a group of very dedicated, very good people who worked for a very long time gathering facts from a variety of different sources that came up with those recommendations. I'm not going to second-guess those recommendations, so in that spirit, I support the Phase Two Report.
Luke? I have not studied the Phase Two Report in detail. What I would say about the ARB is, that's probably one of the bigger complaints on the island that still has to do with the developer. That and Captain Sam Spitt should have been termed over already from the developer, and so the quicker we can execute Captain Sam Spitt turnover and the ARB turnover, that's going to solve the vast majority of the frustrations on the island. The ARB is often called the arbitrary review board. I've never said that about them. I would say that, hilarious, 90% of the island, the way it looks, is because of the ARB, and maybe because of Buddy Darby. So they get beat up a lot, but there is some arbitrary nature to what they've done, or at least there's perception that there is. So the faster that we can make that issue go away, in my mind, the better. So the faster the turnover, the faster the reorganization. The other thing that will happen is, there's a potential for reduced regulation if the ARB is turned over and everybody's more comfortable with where we're going, maybe we don't have to have a residential lot tree ordinance. Maybe the ARB can continue to take care of that. So there's a lot of implications that are day-to-day that impact us to the extent that the ARB has transitioned quicker.
Just one, I tend to agree. I have a very high tolerance for a beneficent dictator, and Kiowa did not get as beautiful as it is by accident. Those are two things that I keep in mind. I think with regard to the ARB, at least in the past, from what I've perceived reading the Phase One Report, is that there are service-level issues relating to timeliness, arbitrariness in a way, and then there are other things. But I think, I think the Phase Two Report addresses what I refer to as the service-level issues by breaking up the governance or the operation of that function as it does.
Great. Any follow-up on that, or ready for the last question? So this question, I'm going to steal from someone in our audience in the first round, and Luke, it goes to you first. What do you think are the primary differences between your view of the policies that need to be addressed?
View of the policies?
Or in general?
I'm not sure where Peter stands on all the policies, so I'm going to have a tough time answering that question.
You haven't been on a board together like Brad and Michael have.
I totally agree. That is a very unfair question to ask him.
Let me maybe talk about how we might approach policies, is maybe the way to do this. I think my experience is very impactful in how I might act on the town council. Again, kind of coming back to my engineering experience for more than a dozen years, my education, at the heart of, my heart of hearts, I'm a problem solver. I'm trying to figure out solutions and how to fix things. The financial side of me says, make sure you check, what are the different options? I had a boss when I was a very young engineer, and I went to his office and I said, I've got this problem, and what do I do? He said, I'm not here to answer your question, but you're the engineer, you need to say, I've got a problem, and here are three solutions. I choose this one for these reasons, and these two aren't as good for these reasons. So that's the way I sort of approach life, is, how do I solve a problem? What are the different options? What are the different costs? What are the different risks? And which one is best if you analyze those things and several others? So that, and then taking my financial background, I take that in reverse. I've got to make an investment. How do I make an investment? What are the implications? What's the horizon I want to make the investment for? How much is it going to cost? What are the risks? The legal risk's a big one. Backruptcy in bonds, I'm a bond guy, not an equity guy. Backruptcy in bonds is a consistent issue you have to deal with. So dealing with, fighting with, negotiating with lawyers, been there, done that, I hate it, but I've got that experience. So as an engineer and as a financial guy, I think I've got great skill sets to bring to bear on helping the town council and helping the town.
We're not that different in that respect. I've spent my life working with clients to solve problems. That's all I can say about it. And because my clients were wholesale bankers, investment bankers, asset managers, I have this financial bent. I am a quant by background. One of the things, this will be a slightly long introduction, I'll get to the point, one of the things that was a real pleasure about making partner at Accenture was what it took, Bob Gatch said to me this, my mentor there, is, Peter, to make partner, you have to be able to do everything from the top to the bottom. You need to be able to write reports, you need to get them produced and copied, you need to sell work to clients, you need to serve clients. So it was a very simple business. You know, you serve clients well, you make a lot of money for yourself and your other partners, and then you develop the next generation of partners. But it's really the craft work, the craftsman work of being a consultant that's attracted me most, and I would say that my style as a council member will be as a deep diver. I will be more like Brad, perhaps less dense in my writing.
Right, right.
He knows.
That was a compliment. That was a compliment.
No, no, it was, it is a compliment. Love it.
You can be pretty dense.
No, no, dense prose, anyway. But that's going to be, so I, Terry, my wife, can attest to this fact, I read Supreme Court decisions in my leisure time. I'm not a lawyer. I just love that stuff.
Great. So.
I think that's reason enough not to vote for it.
Perhaps.
All right. So I think we've got time. Any audience questions? We'll start with Larry again. Ellen's going to.
This one is not about the developer. I'll try to phrase it as a question and not make a speech. When I'm not on Kiowa, I'm up in the Northeast where I sit on the Board of Trustees of the New Jersey Symphony, and in Western Massachusetts where I sit on the Board of Directors and I'm the treasurer of the Maheway Performing Arts Center. The town could have saved a lot of money not gone out and hired consultants and and. And I could have told you why a performing arts center will not work on Kiowa. Remember, I'm the treasurer. And here's my question. If you want to know why, talk to me outside this meeting, I'll tell you.
Sounds like a statement to me, but we'll take it.
Fair enough. There was a question in there someplace.
No one's more passionate about the orange.
Who else? Do we have any other questions?
This is one of those areas that fits between Kika and Toki, but I'm curious, what are your most creative ideas for how we can fundamentally increase the capacity for our amenities? Whether it's golf, tennis, pools, all those things that bring people here that are now getting maxed out even before we have all of the development that's coming?
Who went last? I think our first...
I'll make it easy.
Well, I'll tell you right there. He went, it's your turn.
I don't have a view on that.
It's your turn. Okay, that's easy, too.
I think the first and biggest opportunity for us, and this is something I'll work on on town council, is I think the, and I'm going to apologize to everybody on Retsbluff right now, okay? I think the biggest underutilized asset we have on the island is that boat launch at Retsbluff and that piece of property. I don't know what we do with it that would be agreeable to folks on Retsbluff, but there should be something that we can use that for to increase amenities somehow, whether it's another restaurant, and everybody on Retsbluff gets free dinners, or whether, you know, what it is. But that's a hugely underutilized resource. Now, that's a Kika issue, it's not a town issue, okay? The town, since there's no, we really don't want the town to own any property, the way I think about this is, and Brad and Michael mentioned this, is when we negotiate with the Kiowa Island Golf Resort about what they want to do, there's a way for us to see if they can provide amenities for, whether it's Governor's Club, the whole island, or somewhere in between. So those are two things that I think about. But you raise a great question. There is a demand for greater amenities, whether it's pickleball courts, whether it's tennis courts, whatever the case is. And we need to work on that, so we have greater solutions for people who are especially non-club members.
Full disclosure, Terry and I are members of the club. It came with, the option came with this rather wonderful house we were able to purchase from Louise Lancaster. And I get the amenity issue.
Full disclosure, I am not a member of the club. But if anybody has a sweet, sweetheart deal they want to talk to me about later...
It can't be done.
Do we have another question? Anyone else? Well, I think we've got two great candidates here, and hopefully those questions helped everyone get to know them better. Thank you for coming today, and please vote. Folks! Well done.
Thanks.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks.